So it looks like Garrett's gonna be late too, but let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 5:30. Five, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gatewood is absent at this time. Councilmember Pulipati?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yeah.
Mayor Terry?
Here. So we're on to item two, and I'll ask the city clerk to read the television announcement.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www, I'm sorry, Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, September 21st at 6:00 PM, and Friday, September 23rd at 6:00 PM. The meeting can also be available on youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd ask the audience, in person at least, to remain standing for our invocation. So to start, I believe Ben Avi from Wellspace Health is somewhere in that room, and so I'd ask Ben if he would be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Following that, since we do not have an invicator for tonight, I'll ask for a moment of silence following the Pledge of Allegiance. Ben, if you could lead us?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Ben, and we'll just observe a moment of silence here. Thank you very much. And I know Ben's here for something that's on consent. Hopefully, we're not gonna even talk about, but Ben, thanks for showing up and joining us. For those of you who don't know, Ben has been one of my co-chairs for our cap-to-cap community resources team for about the past five years. So, love to see good friends in the audience. Sorry, I couldn't make it there in person. I had to work right up until we started. We have no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of your screen or around an Apple product in the top right. If you are participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, press *9 to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the post of the agenda. Just before, and I know I kind of made some comment about this at our last meeting, but for anybody who might have picked up a Rogue Grapevine edition in the last week or two, there is going to be a correction made about that story that was written. And just to remind folks, as far as I know, I am completely comfortable and completely supportive of continuing to allow the public to access these meetings by Zoom and to participate by Zoom in virtual meetings. And what story was written by the Grapevine was frankly completely inaccurate, and I hope any public comments about that subject will take into account the comments that I just made, that I did not say that. That is not what I meant, and as far as I know, and you can ask my colleagues, I haven't heard no one say that we were planning to restrict or end access virtually or by Zoom or by telephone. So with that, I would ask the city clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. So I'm gonna give the public a moment to raise their hand in Zoom, and for right now, we did receive five public comments via email. I'm gonna go ahead and read off the names of those who submitted a written public comment via email before the deadline. These comments are available on the city's website. They've also been printed, and they're available for the public in the back of the council chambers, and they have been distributed and emailed to the city council. First is Brenda Guston, second is Jim Garcia, third is James Garcia, and fourth is two public comments from Marilyn Metzger. Next, I'm going to go to the public comment for those who are in the council chambers. First is James Garcia. James, you'll come forward, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak under public comment. Following James will be Gregory Mullenberg.
Thank you. And just to remind folks, in Zoom, now would be the time to raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment for something not on the agenda. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm James Garcia, a resident of the Stone Creek neighborhood, and I'm here to talk a little bit more about the letter I actually sent off to yourselves, as along with city staff and the city clerk for a public comment. I've taken some time to review the county code back in 1999, which was given to me by the county planning department that is in reference to the Z-SPA. Since the Z-SPA was created back in 2002, that is the code that the county is en, or me is to be used. I was later given word back from one of the planning department members that the Z-SPA actually uses the 2003 code. So there's a little bit of a discrepancy between what the county and our city is utilizing with regards to the code. But with that being said, it still uses the Z-SPA for a lot of different things, and one of the biggest ones is regards to height. We were informed at the Dermody kind of expo show that the, oh, the Stone Creek Industrial Center, which is the one that's at corner of Baroque and Zinfandel, was gonna have a height of 43 feet in majority of the building heights, except for when you have the entrance or a corner, which then it jumps up to 45 feet. But then the Z-SPA, it has a height limit of 24 to 40 feet. Going back to the county code, it does state those are the height limits as well. And since the Z-SPA is the formal document with regards to height, it uses a county code in order to allow you to determine why you get the height of up to 40 feet. So I just kind of want to put that out there, that I think the project should not be done. As well as, there's other county codes with regards to developer agreements. Been requested for that developer agreement to actually come forward to me. But regarding that, it says it will not be a detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the immediate area, nor be detrimental or injurious to property or persons in the general neighborhood or to the general welfare of the residents of the county as a whole. Will not adversely affect the orderly development of property or the preservation of property values. By building this in an unorderly fashion, you are actually creating a detrimental preservation of our property values. Our property values are gonna go down because of this. It was not built in an orderly fashion. So just kind of want you to understand that there's things out there that we're now finding out after the fact. That Z-SPA was written for a reason. It also allows certain things to be built, but it should have been built in a better orderly fashion, not at the expense of property owners and the profit of the developer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker.
Good evening, City Council. I am Greg Mylenberg, resident of Rancho Cordova. My concern is SB California, SB 1000, that Senate bill, 1000, signed in 2016. It talks about military installations and standoff from those installations. I believe the California State National Guard Headquarters is a, is one of the military installations. My concern is that the city and Dermody are coordinating with respect to that law, and so I want to make sure that was public record. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Zoom, and I see one hand that's currently raised. Dean Burke, I'm gonna go ahead and mute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Dean Burke, Rancho resident, living in River Trails Estates. I'm actually here to be on the bond oversight committee for item 12.2, so didn't know if I'd needed to speak.
Oh, so is that what you wanted to speak about tonight?
No, just, just if there was any questions, but basically I'd applied and just introduced myself if.
Thanks. So, so just, that's, that's an item on our agenda, so this isn't the time to be making a public comment for that.
So the other comment I had is, there's recent work in my neighborhood resurfacing the streets, and they're redoing corners with ADA ramps. And I had called in once to question why I have, I don't have square curbs in my neighborhood. They're rounded. When they put the ADA ramp in there, for some reason, they added a square curb to part of it. When I called, they said, well, that's the new spec or the requirement, but I've seen in other neighborhoods currently that they're replacing it, and they have rounded curbs. So I guess I'd request Cyrus to talk to him offline or have the person, project manager, give me a call. Yeah, the difference doesn't make any sense right now, so that's one comment I'd have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I do not see any additional hands that are raised in Zoom.
Let's go ahead and take a second. Maybe we can get Dean out of the room because we're hearing a lot of background. Stacy, you wanna say that again?
I do not see any other hands that are raised in Zoom.
Mayor, did you say that Dean could speak introducing himself prior to 12.2?
If he wants to submit a speaker card or raise his hand for an item that is on the agenda, he can do it at the time that it comes on the agenda. So as far as I remember, yeah, so he's here to talk about the Citizen Oversight Committee for Measure H and R. That's gonna be item 12.2. Not public comment. We're hearing no other public comments and not seeing any more in Zoom. We can move on to council reports, and first up will be Councilman Gatewood.
All right, real busy week. There's a lot of stuff going on, and my thing doesn't work. Hold on.
I was gonna say, every time you move that mic, it's an interesting sound on this end.
Sorry, it falls down. So I had a mobile, a mobile home meeting committee meeting where we met with the people, the owners, that are owning the mobile park homes and trying to figure out what we're going to do. If you guys don't remember, we passed an ordinance saying that we were going to implement an amount that they were allowed to raise the fees for rent, but, or rent control for mobile homes, but we stayed it until we had a talk with them. And so we are having negotiations with them right now and hoping to have something to bring before council shortly. We're making a lot of good progress, which I think the Cordova community is going to be very proud of. Met with North State BIA and pitched how amazing Rancho Cordova is to build, live, work, and play. They're engaged in the community, and I really think that they're gonna help us to bring some very cool restaurants and probably better housing and amenities for our community. Went on a tour of UC Davis Health. They just bought the Wells Fargo Building, which is over, or the B of A Building over here, and it looks amazing. They're gonna introduce, I think they said at the height, about 2,000 new people will now have, will have their office there in Rancho Cordova. And I know our business district could use the injection of new people. So I know Famous Burger could love another couple hundred people coming to get a burger every lunch. But yeah, it's an amazing office. All of IT for UC Davis will now be based in Rancho Cordova. One of the, like we always say, all the best stuff comes out of Rancho Cordova. And I believe the tech director is also a Lancer grad, so that was cool. So, once again, the greatest stuff comes out of Rancho Cordova. So we, on a solemn note, we had the re-flaying for Deputy Stasiak, Mark Stasiak, and one of the hardest things I had to do on council was going to his funeral and being a part of that, but also just amazing seeing an individual willing to give his life for my community, a true hero and an amazing individual. And lastly, thank you for the Cordova Community Council and the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce for throwing on Trainspotter. It's always crazy to see them blow a whistle at the politicians as they try to give speeches. It's fun. It was good to see all the community show up and give their opinions, but also good to hear all the people that are running for office. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Councilmember Pulipati.
Thank you, Mayor. So unfortunately, I couldn't attend the whistle stop. And so, but it was a really fun theme that the chamber, the Rancho Cordova Chamber has picked up, given the fact that early on politicians would be at the back of the train going from place to place, giving their talk. And as such, they picked up the whistle stop, which is why they blow the whistle for you to finish your talk and say, move on to the next station. So I think that was a really good way that they picked up and carried that through. What else? I also attended the UC Davis Health Center that was in Rancho Cordova. It was a really cool site. It actually makes us want to go back to work because they had such a really good place for working and for hanging out, and it's so close to all the lovely eateries that we have in Rancho Cordova that the folks that are gonna work there would want to come into work more often. I also attended the League of California Cities in Long Beach. This was like a three-day event where we had a lot of elected officials and city staff attend this conference and expo where they talked about multiple agenda issues such as homeless and about housing. There were, and the few classes that I could attend, given that it was packed, I attended the Climate Action Plan discussion where they talk, other cities talked about how they were implementing sustainability in their area, and they also talked about how they got a, like a third party to come in, assess the city, and give ideas on how they can implement it in their city. I also learned a lot about the homeless and how other cities were dealing with the homeless, and I learned that we as a city actually don't have a lot of influence in how we can house the homeless. It's more of a county issue. So I'm learning more and more about what the city as we can do versus what the county should be taking more of a stance on. One of the things that I learned, and we know what the city can do, is on women empowerment. And I know even on the consent calendar today, we have one topic where we're using our funds to empower folks in our city that are from socio-economically weak areas, and we're using our funds to the greatest benefit. Another thing that I did was a class that was packed, and I didn't attend, not because it was full, but because it didn't, I didn't want to and I didn't need to, was conflicts among council members. And I'm really thankful for the council here today that I didn't have to attend that because we have a great working relationship with our, with my peers here. So I'd like to thank you, council members, so I didn't have to attend that class. And also, another thing I did learn, which I already knew, was how great our city staff is. There were so many classes that were on there, and they were trying to train on how, what the city staff could improve, and I've already been seeing that happen in our city. So thank you, city staff. You're doing a great job, so kudos. And I think that's about the end of my report.
Thank you, Siri. Councilmember Sander, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That community council lunch last week was great. I don't know how long we've been doing that, but certainly since pre-incorporation era at the community councils. So it's, it's 20-plus years of tradition, and it's nice to see it continuing. The Hall of Fame event occurred last Saturday. That was at City Hall. I know at least Garrett was in attendance. I think maybe Linda was in attendance. I'm not sure. But thank you guys for representing me there. I had a conflict, could not attend, first time ever, I think. And I understand it was a great success, so thank you guys for covering us. That really is a special thing in the, in the community. And you know, when I formed RCAA, I don't know, 12 years ago now, probably, Guy Anderson is one of the first people to volunteer to serve on the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association with me. And he was always saying, we need a Hall of Fame, we need a Hall of Fame. I've never attended before that sports Hall of Fame event. So we really have to give Guy Anderson credit, the long-term Cordova teacher and baseball coach. The credit, we're sort of inspiring that. RCA made sure it happened, and it got started, and was funded, and is, you know, has that great, it's our parent organization's community council, so of course it's got that great energy going into it. It's a great event, but I just want to credit with Guy Anderson with the, with the seed that led to the great success that it is right now. I attended the Cal Cities meeting last week. We had some interesting politics going on that was not probably too obvious. I serve on the, on the board, and there is a debate among California cities asking the league to launch a statewide initiative that would bar the state from interfering in our local planning decisions. They did a petition and tried to, the petition language sort of said the league will launch this sort of initiative. And the, and the problem is, while that does get to a tenant of local control that the League of Cities stands for, the problem is, we never stand alone in those initiatives. Those initiatives that we have, we have 100% success record in come with huge partnerships, you know? The counties are there with us, and other interest groups are there with us, maybe labor's there with us. Whoever it is, there's a huge coalition together. The league generally might organize it, but we don't stand alone. And on this particular one, so far, we don't see that coalition going forward. So that initiative, if you hear about it, has been referred to policy committees for discussion at the California League or Cal Cities, as we now prefer to be known, but that is not automatically going forward. I don't know how upset some of those cities are gonna be. I think some of them are sort of the no-housing-growth kind of communities, and they don't want the state imposing growth requirements on them. So that might be the fundamental reason for it. But again, it does get to the fundamental reason why we have a league, which is local control. So Cal Cities was a great meeting. I was happy to see Siri and Donald there, active at the meeting, learning a lot, because you can learn a lot at that meeting. I also attended, on behalf of the National League of Cities, a Future of Work meeting that was held in Sundance in Utah, which is, you guys might remember, that's Robert Redford's ranch. He bought it in the 80s or the 70s or something. I was there as a kid and actually met Redford. And that meeting was, ended up in the travel section of the, what is it? The Salt Lake Tribune, I think, is their big newspaper. But while I was there, I texted my mom and said, hey, I'm at Sundance. And she, like five minutes later, sent me the photo from the newspaper from 1982 when we were there. So crazy. Anyway, Future of.
So they didn't, wait, wait, so they didn't name it after his character from Butch Cassidy?
No.
He bought it, I think, afterwards, and then named it that. Yeah, that's right, Donald. That's it. So, Future of Work, the big takeaway message I got was, people are doing all sorts of programs to try to, well, some cities are, trying to enhance their workforce, train their workforce. And the number one takeaway was, if you don't have really good measures, you've got a problem because you don't know what you're doing, which sounds familiar to one of our mantras at City Hall. We gotta be able to measure, or we don't know what we're doing. But the second one was, if you're not paired up with employers, most of these sort of job program and training grants do not lead to success for the recipients. You've got to be paired with a company in your community or nearby in your region somewhere who's saying, when you get done training those people, we will take them. And one of the measures of success should be, are you employed two years from now? As opposed to, did you get a job right after the end of the program?
Yeah.
Or did you get an internship, or did you complete? That doesn't matter so much. It's the long-term effect and whether you're paired with a local employer. So I thought that was really great advice. There's a lot of other take-home messages from that meeting, but I just wanted to share that particular one with you. RCAA met last week with Park District, I think, for the first time ever, talking about future facility needs. The, I was unable to attend that meeting, but the people who were there reported that the Park District was asking them what their facilities needs were. I think that's, again, as I say, a first for our youth sports organizations. There was no, no knowledge, you know, what the response might be, but at least some data was collected, so we can, we can sort of wait and see what's going on there with the, with the Park District. Let's see, anything else to report? The UC Davis tour of the building was pretty neat. It's interesting to see how workplaces have evolved over time. And there's no slides in this one. You know how we had slides in some of our IT? And I don't know, foam pits and all kinds of crazy stuff was going in pre-pandemic. None of that was here for UC Davis, but it was a very enjoyable workplace. And as you stand there and can see Capital Village on one side, just very short walking distance. It's no wonder that is a desirable jobs location for one of the largest suburban office buildings in the region. It's one of just a handful that are about that 200,000 square foot size under one roof. So kudos to our staff and to us and the greater SAC for getting that done, getting those jobs in there, as well as Solodine, the great other enterprise that we keep doing little announcements about. But it's probably the most significant economic development news in the region since Intel located here in the 80s, I suppose. Linda, if that was the right date, I'm not even sure I got the decade right. But I think it's probably the most significant move since then. And with that, I think that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
Well, frankly, David, I, Donald, I don't think there's any marketing value in having a Butch Film Festival. So I'm sure Sundance was.
A Butch Cassidy.
It still doesn't, it still doesn't resonate.
Yeah.
So, and you're right, I didn't mean anything by it. It's still, Butch Cassidy does not resonate. It's the name of a film festival. In my world, this has been a couple of weeks of anniversaries. Our communications director, Maria Nystad, and I attended the Hispanic Chambers Anniversary Gala. I truly, a gala. They converted the, the Golden One Center into a ballroom that you would have never guessed, that people played basketball there. They covered the entire gigantic floor with, with carpet. There, there was music, there was dancing, there was a stage, there was food in all corners of the room. Everybody had a delightful time, and we highly congratulate the Hispanic Chamber on their, on their anniversary. One of our local engineering firms, who has worked a lot in Rancho Cordova, Wood Rogers, also celebrated their 25th anniversary, and, and I attended that. Lots of staff were there, all of our, basically all of our engineering staff that, that works with Wood Rogers on an almost daily basis. And Regional Transit is coming up on their 50th anniversary from the time that they were, that their enabling legislation was adopted at the state senate. This is Rail Safety Week in the world of transportation, and Regional Transit has a campaign on to remind people to stop, look, and listen. Use your ears when you are approaching a rail crossing of any sort, whether it's light rail or heavy rail, it doesn't matter. Stop, look, and listen. And on a bright note, Regional Transit is preparing to take delivery of the new style rail car, which is a low-flow car. So instead of having to struggle up those two gigantic stairs, which my mother could not do anymore, and a lot of people have trouble with, everything will have a basically, a kind of a, call it zero entry, kind of like the new showers that are, that are in the market today. And so some of our, all of our rail platforms are being reconstructed. And in one particular case, at Zinfandel, our artwork, the doggies are gonna have to be relocated for a while. And then once they get the whole platform reconstructed, then the doggies will come back again, so we don't lose our artwork there. I was privileged, it was a true honor to participate in a women's empowerment group. Siri, you'll love this. At SMUD, they do this quarterly, and they asked three speakers. One lady was the first female of color sergeant-at-arms at the senate. female of color Sergeant at Arms at the Senate. Um, she worked for Tony Beard, the gentleman who who had been Sergeant at Arms for decades and then retired and then returned to be the, the Sergeant at Arms. Um, the other member of the panel was Kathy Lester, who grew up here in Rancho Cordova and attended Cordova High. And although she did not graduate because she was in the army by the time she was eighteen, um, Kathy considers herself a Rancho Cordova native. Um, she, you may recall, she is currently uh, the new police chief at the city of Sacramento. And I thoroughly enjoyed this opportunity to get to know her a little bit. Um, as Garrett said, um, we also attended a beautiful memorial service for Mark Stasiuk over at the police department at the, at the lovely statue that was created for him uh, to honor his service and his lifetime of commitment. And, um, I understand Garrett's comments. I was the mayor that year and standing at Cordova Lane with Sheriff John Mc, Sheriff, was a very difficult day. And I, I, I know we all treasure being able to, um, to welcome his family to Rancho Cordova and to, um, to celebrate Mark's life. So Donald, I would recommend that tonight we adjourn um, in memory of Mark and his service. And then of our dear Queen Elizabeth, who was buried today in a very moving ceremony.
Just making notes. Will do. Thank you. Um, well, I know Siri mentioned women's empowerment. And since you gave him a plug, Linda, I will say I've had my tour of duty over being a a philanthropic officer for different companies over the last seventeen years or so. I, I have I've attended some of those graduations for women's empowerment. Uh, I tend not to do it anymore because I don't buy that much Kleenex. Um, but they are always phenomenal, uh, events to attend. And, and, and what they do there, I know I have a coworker now that's, uh, joined the board about a year and a half ago, but um, I, I assisted in helping some coworkers join that board years ago, and they are doing phenomenal work in changing um, changing the lives of of mothers throughout this region and women in general, but, uh, in particular mothers. Um, and yeah, it's, it's a fantastic organization. I'm really glad that you had a chance to do that because um, like I said, I've done it. Uh, I don't know if emotionally I could handle ever serving on that board or going to those graduations on a regular basis, but um, that's one of, that's one of those events that I've never, I've never left without going through a handful of tissues. So, um, it's been fantastic organization. Um, okay, uh, I did want to echo some of the things I heard today. Uh, Garrett spoke about the mobile home, uh, rent space conversations that we're having. Uh, I would just say, uh, I have been very, very pleasantly surprised about the industry and the owners and their willingness to come with real solutions to the concerns that that, uh, our residents have been expressing. Um, I'm cautiously optimistic that we probably have one more meeting to nail down really one or two more details of a potential MOU and agreement that we might be able to produce. Uh, I want to thank Mica and Stefan and the rest of staff that have been working very hard and doing a lot of due diligence in between meetings to get questions answered and to get data that we've been asking for. Uh, and then again, I do want to, I want to express thanks to the park owners who have been, uh, frankly, to this point, been very great to work with. Um, I, I don't want to change anything. I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to come up with a, a workable solution for all sides. Um, and I reminded folks at the last meeting that um, if, if one side walked out of this meeting completely happy, then we didn't try hard enough. And so everyone needs to walk out somewhat satisfied and somewhat disappointed. And I think we're, we're getting closer to that. Um, I, I, I had a meeting on Friday for the Los Rios Community College, uh, I believe it's called the Los Rios Colleges Foundation. Uh, this was the, I've been serving on that for a couple of years now. Uh, somewhat representing myself, somewhat representing the city. Uh, and I think I shot you all a really cool visual that they shared with us at that meeting, which was showing the scale of the different promise programs in the region. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bash anybody by naming names here, but I will just say that if you added up all of the promise program programs that, uh, the college has raised money for, other jurisdictions have raised money for, we are roughly about half of all of the promised money that has come into this county um, from all different kinds of places. And to just compare that, we invested about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars into our residents to attend community college over the last five-ish years. And then that same amount of time, about a million dollars came in from other sources to support all of the other students across the county. Not just in unincorporated, but in the city of Sacramento and Folsom and Citrus Heights and West Sacramento. So this includes Yolo County and El Dorado County. You have all those jurisdictions combined. Our city was something we're going to talk about later tonight, which is Measure H, has invested almost three quarters of a million dollars in helping our local residents gain higher education and prepare for a better job. Um, and I just think that speaks volumes. And, and again, if we look, and I shared this with a lot of other folks, if you look at the millions of dollars that Measure H and Measure R has produced over the years, I still think this has been one of our key things that that we've done. And David, you and I served on the high, the basic needs for higher education, NLC Working Group. There's even a much larger working group right now that's, that's going after some state funding that has been seeded by Kaiser in looking at the effects of promise programs and how they work in building trades and a lot of other um, high priority workforce sectors. And I think we're honestly just kind of the, the the shining city on the hill when it comes to this kind of work that um, I, I, I don't know of another city that has kind of invested at the level that we have and have seen the kind of impacts that we've seen over the last five years. So kudos to everybody that's been involved. Um, yeah, briefly, I will say I attended the UC Day, UC Davis Health uh, tour that we had for the, the, the building across the street, which was the old B of A Call Center that's right by a lot of the restaurants and everything. And just to remind everybody too, there's a building across the street that I believe a hundred and something thousand square feet that's already got people in it and has been up and running for, I, I want to say nine months or so. So uh, the investments that UC Davis has been making on the White Rock Corridor there, uh, just phenomenal and great to see. Uh, not only really state of the art offices going into a building that's thirty or thirty-five years old and now looks like it was built, you know, this year. Uh, I just think that's fantastic. Uh, and then to follow up on that, yes, the, the announcement went out about Solidine. We're really thrilled to see them move into the community. And I know they just started their tenant improvements and will become one of our largest employers and have already expressed an interest in uh, getting more involved in the community, charitable giving and supporting a lot of our local organizations. Uh, so we're, we're thrilled to have that, that announcement finally be able to come out. I know it's been the worst kept secret for about nine months around here. Uh, but we're really thrilled to, you know, welcome thousands of high paying jobs into the community and hopefully through both of those, uh, activities and, and, and new employers, um, we'll see more residents that want to live close to where they work and not commute here from Folsom and El Dorado Hills and Roseville and Elk Grove and a lot of other places. Um, SCA met last week. Uh, it was fairly uneventful in a good way. Uh, we had some conversations around the tax measure that's coming up this fall and clarifying some MOUs and some other agreements that they had around the operating of, of that money. Uh, there were two events since our last board meeting or since our last council meeting for the Sacramento Children's Museum. Uh, I would just urge my colleagues, as it was mentioned, that there weren't a lot of board members at the last couple of uh, events. Uh, council members are always welcome. Uh, the city sponsors every single event that this, that the Children's Museum puts on. And so you all can attend for free whenever you want. Um, so please attend, but there was, uh, the Butterfly Event was a couple of weeks ago. That was also, uh, recognizing and honoring, uh, Grandparents' Day. So that was where you paid, you got a little box with, with a, with a butterfly in it and you could open the box and release it with a lot of the families that were there. Uh, there were some TV that, that showed as well. It's always a nice event. I want to say that's the fourth or fifth event like that that we've been able to have. E-Even through COVID, we would hold those events. The only time that it became like a drive through where you picked it up and brought it home was when we had too much smoke and they were afraid that the butterflies might not make it. Uh, and then this past Sunday was the XO XO, uh, Special Exhibit, uh, premiere. And that was fully funded by the city. So kudos. If you haven't seen it, go over and take a look. This is the first traveling exhibit the Children's Museum has ever hosted. Um, and I think it's a fantastic uh, example of helping teach children about empathy and love and connection with other people. Uh, something that I'm sure lots of politicians in this region would benefit from, uh, not just the five of us on this call. Um, no, no report for the Air District. They meet later this week. Uh, I also want to echo a lot of the things that were said about the, the ceremony that we had for the four year uh, anniversary of the, the death of Mark Stasik, honestly, the murderer of Mark Stasik. Um, thanks to Chief Luke and Cyrus for speaking at the event uh, and for hosting, uh, his family, his wife and, um, and, and his, his, I believe it was his sister and his mother and, and, and father were there as well. And a lot of the police department showed up. Just to remind folks that, you know, M-Mark's was the first time we've had an officer killed in the line of action, but we had somebody who died and um, you know, because of a car accident. This was the first time that somebody was actually murdered that, that worked for us. Um, and and he, he will always be remembered, but I think what I hope people also remember is from the way it's been described to me, he also saved his partner's life that day.
He did.
That if it wasn't for him, his partner probably would not be here. And it was him realizing that his partner had been shot, that he actually returned fire and took fire and it gave her enough time to seek cover. Um, and so beyond his death, he saved a life that day too. Uh, and I hope we'll all remember that. I know I will. The Cal Cities Conference was great. Uh, it was the first time to be in person in a long, long time that I can remember for that conference. Um, I echo what I think Siri said, that a lot of the best sessions uh, were standing remotely because I think they just picked the wrong rooms to put the best stuff in, which is always hard to tell because you just don't know who's going to show up to what. Um, but there were some great conversations about homelessness. There were some good ones about policing uh, and using license plate reader, um, technology in, in some other ones and some good ones around communication. So it was great to finally see people in person again. And, um, and we even got to watch Sac Republic almost win the, the, uh, I believe it's called the National Cup or whatever, uh, right up until the end. It was a, it was a great match, but, uh, kind of unfolded right there at the end. But um, I know we got together with some folks from Sacramento, some other folks who got to see that and were really proud of the Sac Republic. Um, and I also just want to thank again the Sac Republic because on Sunday after the Children's Museum event that we went to, my son actually participated with some other folks, with some other students from the SEBA program, which I can't remember what SEBA stands for, but it's the, uh, the youth television program, but four kids from Sunrise Elementary got to be sideline reporters at this last, uh, Sunday Republic game. Uh, and it was great. My son actually got to be one of those reporters and get to go on the sideline and interview some players and coaches and I believe they met the, the owner and the president of the Republic as well. So thank you to Republic for all that you've done in our community lately. And I know we're working on some other cool stuff that might have something to do with the youth center here in the not too distant future. Um, oh, and then I'll obviously with Garrett had said something I just want to clarify about. Uh, our joke has always been that when, after Gary Davis and Jim Cooper got elected to the Elk Grove City Council, that we used to always joke that the best things about Elk Grove always came from Ranch Cordova because both of them are Cordova grads and we can point a whole bunch of other examples like I didn't know that Kathy Lester was from, was from Cordova, um, and a whole bunch of others. But yeah, you can see the seeds of success and leadership throughout our region. Uh, whether it's the county board of supervisors or our incoming sheriff and a lot of other folks all come from Cordova High. So anybody that, that, you know, may have their, their opinions of certain schools around the region, I think we can point that, uh, Cordova High has produced some some pretty good, uh, leaders that we all, uh, have the, the honor and privilege of working with. And with that, I think I'm done and I will turn it over to our city manager for any, uh, for a city manager report if he has anything to share.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most, everything has already been mentioned. I just wanted to, uh, thank the council for attending Mark Stasiuk's mem-uh, memorial. Uh, I had a chance to visit with, uh, his family and see his parents, his wife and, uh, uh, and sister and they're extremely grateful of, uh, the city providing them with the support that uh, they have received in the past four years. His colleagues are also very appreciative of the, the support that we have given to the families. So thank, thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that. Uh, so I'm actually, and you've, uh, some of you have also mentioned Solidine. I'm actually joining you, uh, today, uh, from Washington DC. I'm, I'm here, uh, I'm here actually traveling with.
I forgot that. And that doesn't look like the background.
Yeah. So I'm actually here in Washington DC with the leadership of Solidine, including their chief executive officer, uh, Rob Crook and also Barry Broome with CEO of, uh, Greater Sacramento Economic Council. We're here to not only showcase, uh, the success that we've had with Solidine and the work that we had to do with the, um, uh, with the business and also with the, with, with the regional partnerships that we have been able to create and the support that we've been giving them. But also how important it is for the federal government to also acknowledge and recognize that they play a big role. So, uh, we have, uh, some meetings set up. We would be meeting with, with our senator and congressman tomorrow. Uh, we have had some very good discussions so far. And also, uh, you know, this is such an important story, I think in terms, in terms of the, um, council member Sandy, I mentioned it that, so you mentioned that this may be the biggest win after, after Intel. Uh, you know, The Economist, uh, wanted to do an interview with us today. So, uh, we were, we were able to sit down with the chief editor of The Economist today, Barry and I, and shared our story and shared the work that has gone into it to, to be able to land this business. So, uh, you know, just, uh, between, uh, the, uh, work that UC Davis is doing, they, they will bring in ultimately up to about two thousand employees to this area. Solidine is expected to bring up to nineteen hundred or two thousand employees. They have already committed to, and have started on the improvements and the, the investment of about over a hundred million dollars. And they're expected to invest another billion, that's one billion with a B, in the next ten years. So this is, uh, this is incredibly important, significant, significant win. Uh, for the, not only for the, for the city, but also for the region. And I really want to acknowledge, uh, this, the work our city staff did. Um, I know Amanda and Mica did, uh, a great deal of work. We've been talking with them for over a year and a half. So, uh, so none of these, uh, really happened by accident. We had a lot of great work and planning goes into it for us to be able to achieve, achieve something significant like this. So, uh, thank you, council, for your leadership. This is, uh, I'm, I'm just fit to be representing our community in our discussions with, uh, uh, the members of our Congress and Senate related to this, uh, this big win for the community.
Thank you, sir.
And that's all I have.
All right. So let's all be sensitive. Our city manager is nine twenty-three where he is right now.
Yep.
Uh, luckily we don't pay you by the hour there, but, uh, so that will move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items, uh, consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. So I'll start off with, do we have any public comment on the calendar?
Yes, item nine point five, I received a speaker card and I'm looking at hands in Zoom and I don't see any additional hands that are raised.
Okay, let, let's just remind folks in Zoom that if you want to make a public comment about something on the calendar now would be the time. Um, Adam, can I ask you just a parliamentary procedure? Can, can we just take public comment on the calendar, then move the whole calendar? Do we need to pull that item and take it individually? I can't remember how that's supposed to work.
Sure, you can do it either, either way is, uh, normally you would, you would move the item, you would move the balance of the agenda and then take the item on which there's public comment afterwards. But it is at the chair's discretion.
And we can do both. Okay. Um, so before we take public comment, colleagues, is there anything that you'd like to pull from the calendar? I'm not looking for a motion, just, just if there's anything to pull from the calendar. Okay, hearing done, let's go ahead and take the public comment. Uh, I'm going to check in Zoom, but Stacy, go ahead and let's take that one public comment and then we'll see if we have anything else. If we don't have anything else to pull, then we can just take it as one motion.
James Garcia. James Garcia.
Hello, City Council. I'm James Garcia, again, resident of Stone Creek. I'm just here to kind of reiterate what's been going on over several months, at least as far as with projects. This is a new housing development project that's going in, based off what I can see, and it's the final large lot map. With that in mind, you made a nice little comment about we need to have more homes for all these nice new businesses that are going to attend and start working here. But if we want this to be a non-commuter town, we want to build the homes of the right size. Think about that lot map, and don't ask for special permits by the builder or allow those to happen, because they know our city. They know what our setbacks are. They know what our lot sizes need to be in order to actually have a proper-sized home. Lennar is a very, very well-known home maker. They know how big of a home they want to build, and they know what lot size they need to be able to put it on there. So it really is just make sure that this is the time for them not to be coming back and asking for special permits, unlike some of the other projects that have been taking place that have come back, asked for decreases in setbacks. We want to have proper homes. We want the future of our city to also have a legacy of proper size and not be a detriment to their way of life, such as going to be happening in other neighborhoods. So just consider that when you work with this developer. Don't allow them to have special permits for things that don't need to be taking place. We have reasons why we want setbacks to be what they are. They know what size lots they need to have for their individualized homes. Make a nice, lasting community out of these homes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any hands in Zoom. So colleagues, I'll bring it back. Do we have a motion?
I will move approval of 9.1 through 9.7.
Motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Bud, second by Pula Patti. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pula Patti?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bud?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Hi.
I just want to reiterate, especially yes for item 9.3.
She wants an extra special vote on that. All right. I wish that was actually incorporated into Robert's rules, but unfortunately, I don't think we can. Okay, well, the next couple are going to go pretty fast here. We have no consent public hearing items, and we have no public hearing items. So we'll move on to regular calendar items, and our first regular calendar item will be 12.1, Presentations of the 2024 Blueprint by the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. And I'm hoping somewhere in there is our fearless CEO of the Regional Governments Commission, Jim Corless, James Corless, excuse me.
He's here.
There he is. James, the floor is yours.
Well, James is coming up. I just want to say, as your board member and a past chair of Secog, he is on a tour of all local jurisdictions in our region. And as you know, Secog encompasses a rather broad area. And the update we're talking about is the one that I chaired a few years ago when I was board chair at Secog. So there's a ton of analytical work that goes into this and a huge product that's required by the federal government, the MTP. There's also some state mandated programs. And so you're going to hear James talk about both state mandates and federal mandates and Secog's own initiatives and interests in bringing those together to work on economic prosperity, transportation, and to sort of take a look at the region's planning going forward. So just with that, I want to say it's a pleasure working with James. It's a pleasure working with Secog. It's a remarkable group of people there. And as one of the board members just said, we got to get out there and talk to everybody. I'm appreciative that he's here in front of us tonight. So welcome, James.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Sander and councilmembers. And yeah, it's, it's a pleasure to be here. I also want to recognize I've got some great staff behind me, Sam Shelton, the new Abraham, who are working on this long-range plan. And I think if I, if I do something and click a button, things should appear on the screen. Okay. Again, James Corless, Executive Director of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. I think you all know this. We're a council of governments that represents the greater Sacramento region. So that's 28 local jurisdictions, 22 cities, six counties. And for an area this size geographically, it is kind of remarkable that we have every single local government sitting around the table twice a month. The long-range plan that Councilmember Sander just referenced is a long name, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, Sustainable Community Strategy. I'm really giving you a preview tonight. We are aiming to come back and really wanting to engage you and your residents and the entire region next year when we really roll up our sleeves. We're calling this blueprint. And actually, in 2024, when we hope to adopt this plan, it'll be the 20th anniversary of the regional blueprint that was really a bottom-up, really quality growth strategy that was, that was done here by the jurisdictions across the region with a lot of public engagement. You know, I'm sure, and I don't have to tell you, that we're one of the fastest-growing six-county regions, metropolitan regions in the country, in the state. In the last census, we were the fastest-growing region in California, faster than the coastal cities and regions. That's both an opportunity and a challenge in the next decade, but it is also going to slow down. So one of the interesting things, this long-range plan, as we put it together, will actually look out to the year 2050. So it'll be the next 25 years of growth and infrastructure and jobs, and thinking about traffic and air quality and equity and all the rest of it. That's a long way to look out, but it is, as Councilmember Sander said, it's a critical plan to put together for lots of reasons. Without this plan, we are not able to apply for grants at the state level and the federal level. We have to meet all kinds of state and federal requirements, including at the state level, a very tight greenhouse gas reduction requirement by the year 2035 in order to be, to be compliant and actually compete for state funding, state transportation funding through Senate Bill 1. Our board has endorsed what we call a triple bottom-line framework to frame out this plan of equity, economy, environment. So we are trying to balance economic prosperity and environmental sustainability and social and racial equity. We're trying to balance those goals as we think again about the infrastructure investments in the plan. This is a plan that is largely about transportation, but we actually start with growth and development and housing and jobs. Very, actually, coming up later this fall, we'll have a call for transportation projects as a way to implement our last long-range plan. Very happy to say that we've been able to invest in things like White Rock Road, Chase Drive, Mayfair Field Drive, and other kinds of transportation projects like you see here locally and across our region. One of the things that we're going to do a little bit differently in this next plan, and it hearkens back to the blueprint from 20 years ago, is we are right now developing, and the staff behind me and at Secog, three pretty distinct pathways, future scenarios, what, the what-if scenarios. And those will be largely based on what kinds of growth patterns and the pace of growth and the timing and phasing of transportation and housing and jobs and infrastructure. One of those pathways will, will be a very outward expansion of growth in the region. One will be a kind of a balance, a mix, and another one will be very much focused on reinvesting in our existing cities and our suburban communities, revitalizing older commercial corridors and older parts of our region, looking at, again, timing of transportation projects to phase with those, and really trying to understand what it means. So when we come back next year, and we want to engage, as I said, all of you and your residents here in Rancher Cordova, we're actually going to have data for you about each of these pathways. We're going to show you how these things perform in terms of traffic congestion, air quality, access to jobs and opportunity, economic development, loss of farmland, but also things like public health, not just air quality, but actually active transportation, bicycling and walking and the like. So we'll have a lot of data when we come back next year. We want to have a very robust discussion in the region about basically, what do we want to be in 20, 30, 40 years? How do we want the region to be? How are we going to balance a lot of these competing priorities? I will say to you, it's very important to understand that this plan has to be very fiscally constrained by federal law. This is not a wish list of every project, of every transportation project. It's a little bit like doing a home renovation, and you know you need some more space for a growing family, but your roof is leaking and your foundation has to be replaced. And you don't have the budget to do it all. So that means trade-offs. That means really tough choices. And we aim to do that, again, in a very transparent and public way next year. So we want your help on outreach and engagement. We'll come back to you again. We don't want to hold a public hearing in downtown Sacramento and hope people show up. We want to come to you. We want to come to events and farmers' markets and anything that's happening in your community. We want to be there next year and really try to engage your residents and the public across the region. Next year is the big year, as I mentioned, on this plan, on the blueprint plan for education and outreach, elected official sessions, and then developing a preferred pathway. It isn't pick one of those three. It's, it's really trying to connect with people about what are the elements and the best parts of each of those to develop a preferred scenario. And then we're aiming for an adoption the following year. I want to just touch on two. That plan seems big. It seems far away in terms of 2050 is a long time from now. There's a lot of really exciting programs. I've been before your council, I know, in the recent past. But in terms of actually implementing our last plan and even this plan, I just want to make sure you're aware of some of these programs. I will say, by the way, you have a fantastic staff, it's always been, already been referenced here, who has taken great advantage of a lot of these programs, have been very engaged with us on the development of this plan and some of these programs. First thing I want to mention to you, which is, I think, really exciting, is our mega-region working group. So we're actually working with nine-county Bay Area Transportation Planning Agency, MTC, and the Northern San Joaquin Valley, the San Joaquin Council of Governments. We've identified 12 mega-region projects, and we are now advocating together, joining arms at the state Capitol and in Congress to get a lot of these investments in the I-5 corridor, the 80 corridor, Sacramento Metro Airport and Airport, and a lot of the passenger rail extensions with the Capitol Corridor. We're going to be seeing ACE Rail and the San Joaquin Rail come up to downtown Sacramento and the airport and possibly Marysville and Chico in the near future. Your staff and Councilmember Sander, I know you know this project, was very engaged in a multi-year process to envision an entire six-county region connected with a system of off-road paved trails, walking and biking trails. Think American River Parkway times 100. This envisions nearly 1,000 miles of new trail and will allow you to basically get everywhere, you, your parents, your kids, your teenagers, in a way that's safe, in a way that's inviting, that's healthy. We have lots of gaps in our regional trail network, and we aim to be filling those and advocating very strongly on behalf of that. And that's not only a great transportation mode, but it is great for health and air quality, too. Cyrus was mentioning being back in DC with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. We partner very closely with GSAC and the Metro Chamber and Valley Vision. We've launched an economic prosperity strategy, and that is embedded in the economic E of our long-range plan. How do we invest in infrastructure to not just attract jobs, but retain a talented workforce, to build a quality of life in this region that is going to make people stay and communities that they're going to be attracted to and want to stay in and live in and grow old in and have kids in, and those kids and our kids can afford to still stay here. And last but not least, I think about the future and the year 2050. These high school students are part of our 2022 Youth Leadership Academy. That plan and its horizon year are going to be the kind of region we build when these kids are adults. We are, we do this every year. It's a super popular program, and it's awesome. So we'd love to get your nominations from your local high schools here for high school students, ninth through 12. They are now open through November the 4th. And we take them through six months of what does it mean to do regional planning, civic engagement. We have members of the legislature and Congress come and speak to them, and we inspire them about, honestly, jobs and career pathways that are the future, that are wonderful, that are in our industry. And we're really looking for very diverse, talent-full, because, again, ours is a growth industry, and we need to attract a lot of folks. So with that, I know I wanted to make it somewhat quick and give you, in some ways, a taster platter and a teaser for coming back next year. This is an important plan. These initiatives I mentioned are an important way for us to be implementing the plan. Just would, going to need your engagement next year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, James. Let's start with, do we have any public comment for this item? Stacy?
The City Clerk's Office has not received any public comment, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. We'll just remind folks in Zoom, if you do want to raise your hand or you do have a comment on what you just heard, now would be the time. We'll give another 10 seconds or so. And looking, except for a handful of people, it looks like most of the folks in here are on our payroll. With that, I'll bring it back to our, to my colleagues. Any questions or comments on what you heard?
I've got a comment about the regional trails initiative.
Go ahead.
So I think this is some really important work. And in Rancher Cordova, we should probably have great examples of this that other local jurisdictions probably don't, because we've got the American River Parkway running, the best part of it, running through our jurisdiction. We spend, and Cyrus can correct me, we spend very little time talking to our neighbors, mainly Sacramento County, about how trails we're working on might connect to what they're working on, or what sort of critical connections need to be made for bicyclists, walkers, to connect strategic points of interest between our jurisdictions. So we've got the American River Parkway Trail that runs through us. That connects on both sides. But, you know, there's been one idea that we've talked about for probably 20 years, which is, is it possible to add a pedestrian bridge over the American River at a location like Hagan Park or near Hagan Park? Because there's an entire area of the county north of there, and there's also park and rec facilities directly across the river from Hagan Park that could sort of be merged and have access to our jobs base in Rancher Cordova if that connection existed. We've talked about doing a cutaway stream project up there on the river. We talked about, could the cutaway stream project be part of a very architecturally significant bridge over the river at that point that would connect Effie Yaw and Sorbonne Farms? And the live steamers, et cetera, that would give everybody who lives in that sort of Carmichael neighborhood up there access to our jobs and a relatively direct route, because now they have essentially no route, at least a very dangerous route, to try to get to Jobs in Rancher and Secuitus. So there are questions like that, I think, that we don't ask ourselves often enough. And this study should point out some opportunities like that. I'm hoping, James, that as part of this, we're not just sort of recording what everyone's doing, but we're also doing some analysis to point out, these are connections that ought to be made from one point to another because there is opportunity there. Do you have any, any comments on that, James?
Well, I know one thing is, we don't want this to be just a plan, right, that sits on the virtual shelf and gathers dust. And in addition to cities and counties, Councilmember Sander, the other thing that was fascinating is all the special districts, the reclamation districts, the flood control districts, the folks that have the canals and the old railroad rights of way. If you think about the transportation corridors in this region, those are the key, the key corridors. So I've likened this to, you know, if we didn't have a light rail system, what if we had a vision for a light rail system? So now we have a vision for one. Now we actually got to go figure out how to actually get it done and connect it, fund it, finance it, get it in the state Capitol and, and, you know, in the, get it funded in Congress. I think we're going to see more and more programs to fund these kinds of key segments, those key missing segments, like you mentioned, across the American River. And I, and I'm hoping that this plan is going to have us able to advocate successfully for those. You and I have talked a lot about what is the future of public transportation in this region, right? It is, it's challenging. We need public transit. We need to get people out of cars wherever we can. But with the loss of downtown jobs, with telework, right? We've got to be smarter about how we think about transit. One thing I'm very sure of is that people are going to want to walk and bicycle with their kids and their families in a safe place and a safe way, and those- And those things are not just nice-to-haves in the future, they're must-haves. So I'm hoping that this, along with a lot of the work that your staff does locally, a lot of our bicycle and pedestrian plans, but this vision in particular for the trail network, is really going to help.
So I should follow that up with a question about whether or not the Sacramento Placerville rail corridor, JPA, is included in this presentation. It has to do with the trails and the excursion railroad going into El Dorado County from Folsom.
Yep. I know we've, I know we've talked with them. We're working very closely in the, in the development of this, right? The challenge, as you know, I'm sure, Vice Mayor Budge, is how do you do potentially both keep the excursion train into a trail, right?
Oh, it's all, it's all, it's all there. It's all there. The corridor is, they've been working on this for decades. And there really is an opportunity to do both rails, to do adjacent rails and trails. So this is, that issue was, that issue was resolved quite some time ago.
I, I would, I love that vision, right? Because if you, obviously, you know that you sit on the, one of the most historic rail corridors, right? Coming from our street downtown through Rancho, all the way to Placerville, right? So that, the idea of connecting a trail all the way up there is fantastic. My understanding is it's just, it's a, if, if you're going to do both up into El Dorado County, it's just a funding challenge. That is not cheap to carve out that trail next to the rail up there.
No, but it's being done piece by piece.
Or to, or to co-locate it, you know? Is there a way through legislation to alter the safety rules in such a way that,
Yeah.
you know, you could ride on the rails, but still use the rails occasionally? There's, there's an underlying title issue there where if the rails go away in substantial parts of that trail, the railroads could re-flame it in the, in the transfer. So the rails are not just something that can be willy-nilly removed. The, the ownership would then be at stake.
Yeah, that would be a fabulous corridor to have both, no doubt about that.
Yeah, and David and I both sit on that JPA.
Great.
Yeah, ask Mendocino what it feels like to try to keep a rail from being operated right now. They're, they're in a huge fight with some rail operators. And I know we've had some trails on both rail systems.
The skunk train?
That's Fort Bragg.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, Mendocino kind of a yes, it's Fort Bragg, but it's the operators of the skunk train. And go, go read up on how them and the city over there are getting along with each other. Any other questions or comments? Cyrus, I think you had something, too?
I, I have one.
What's your?
James, you had a slide that showed the housing growth, and you had a percentage, 40% to 90%. So it was a retrospective timeline, or what's that percentage represent?
No, those are the different pathways that we're, we're going to be analyzing, which is the percentages really are how much of the, sort of a more compact infill footprint do you have going out in the future? And how much are we not investing in our existing communities and going outward? So that you'll, you'll, we're working with your staff very closely on these scenarios. So it's basically, it, those are growth pattern scenarios.
Okay. In part two, can you send us more information on that youth academy that you were mentioning?
Oh, sure, yeah. Actually, if you go to our website, I'm pretty, if you just go to our main page, it should be up there, seco.org. If you do a black backslash youth, I believe you'll get there. But we can absolutely get stuff out to you. And we would love to see as many high school students from, from your school district as possible.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I know this time last year, we, we made sure to highlight that with all of our two-by-twos with the school districts. Other questions or comments for the presenter? Cyrus, I think you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that great questions that are being asked tonight, and we'll be sure that we will actively participate in the process that SECOG has initiated and provide the input and the feedback from, from the city council and from the community. But overall, I also wanted to acknowledge the, the great collaborative relationship that we've had with SECOG. I think James and his team have been great partners with the city. We've been able to advance and receive assistance from SECOG with funding for many of our key infrastructure projects, the vision. I think the work we do at the community level, if, you know, the vision is not provided or if the, if we don't look at what happens outside of the city limits, that, you know, it won't work and it won't be as effective as we expected it to be. So the, the trains, the trade network, the transportation network is, and the connection to our surrounding and neighboring jurisdictions is the, is the key. And some of those key connections is where SECOG can step in and help. And they've done a great job of it and helping, helping facilitate those discussions. So thank you, James, to you and your team for the work that you've done. And we'll be an active participant in your process in the coming, next, next three years.
And I did mean to mention, I forgot to mention, the Green Means Go program. Councilmember Sander, when he was chair of SECOG, really helped push this over the, over the finish line. That is really infrastructure funding to actually try to spark a lot of revitalization and more infill development, say, close to light rail. And I know your Mayor Mills, you know, Civic Center site, right, is a perfect example of that. So we actually got some money from the state. I think you put an application on that. So really, and really happy to see your city and your staff just taking advantage of a lot of these programs. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, James, always great to see you, and not just in DC. So nice to see you here. And I say that because I'm not on SECOG, sorry. I don't get to see James unless we go to cap to cap. With that, we will move on to, actually, let me just check one last time to make sure I didn't see any hands in there. Nope, no hands in Zoom, great. So that will move on to item 12.2, Measure H and Measure R, Measure H Community Enhancement and Investment Fund Citizen Oversight Board Appointments. And turn it over to Stacy and Randy K.
Thank you, Mayor. So good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Stacy Delaney, and next to me is Randy K. Stevens. We'll be presenting information tonight on the Oversight Board Appointments for both Measure H and Measure R. And this evening's presentation will focus on the four appointments to the Oversight Board for our members who will serve a four-year term. So those would be the adult members, as well as two one-year term appointments. And that would be the student members to the Measure R and Measure H Community Enhancement and Investment Fund Citizen Oversight Board. And we're going to start off with a little bit of background information. So with the passage of Measure H in 2014, city council had expressed an interest in establishing an Oversight Board. And at that time, it was not required by the voter-approved sales tax. However, council envisioned that this would provide an additional layer of transparency to the community. So in 2017, council created the Oversight Board parameters with the goal of having the first Oversight Board members take their oath of office in 2018. And that did happen in March of 2018. Five Oversight Board members were appointed to the Oversight Board, and their goal was to review how tax revenues from Measure H were spent by the city. And those appointed members took their oath of office in May of 2018, and they fulfilled their two-year terms. In October of 2020, city council approved the appointment of six applicants and therefore recommended that the five-person Oversight Board should be changed to a seven-person Oversight Board when you factor in the two student appointees. And those student appointees rotate among our various school districts and also typically include a college student who's a Promise Program recipient. So the current size of the Oversight Board is a nine-person board when we factor in the seven adults and the two students. Additionally, in October of 2020, city council had asked us to stagger the terms of the Oversight Board members. So we made that change in late 2020. And at that time, three of the six Oversight Board members were randomly assigned a two-year term. The other board members were assigned a four-year term, and we had a vacant position at that point. And that was also assigned a two-year term. And so from that point thereafter, all the Oversight Board members would be on a four-year term limit. They are able to reapply. The students remain a one-year term, recognizing that students will graduate, and we want to also have representation from the various school districts that serve Rancho Cordova. Also, with the passage of Measure R in 2020, the ballot language did require oversight for Measure R. Therefore, the role of the Oversight Board was broadened to include both Measure H and Measure R. And that change went into effect in 2021. So we're now at the stage where the four appointees who were serving a two-year term will finish their term of service with us, as well as two students will complete their one-year term of service. So tonight, you will be appointing four adults to serve a four-year term and two students to serve one-year terms each. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Randy K. at this point.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Stacy?
Sure.
So. So we have one person that identified that they are a member.
Correct.
But it sounds like, but do we have members that are continuing as well as these people who have asked to be appointed tonight?
Yes, so you'll have three members who will continue because they have not reached their four-year term. And then you have one member, Dean Burke, who is one of the members who has reapplied to serve an additional four years he's currently served to. And all the other applicants are new.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Staff will share information about our adult applicants first, and then we'll follow with information about our student and at-large applicants. Staff opened the application period in June to fill four vacancies. The application called for interested full-time residents of Rancho Cordova who are registered voters and also must be 18 or older. Among the eight eligible applicants, one is from a current member seeking an additional term of service. The council has an opportunity tonight to select four Oversight Board members among the applicants. Mr. Fabiani, Ms. Gray, Mr. Khalil, Mr. Cruz, Ms. Shook, Mr. Bokta, Mr. Burke, and Ms. Burns. These applicants may be online or in person this evening, and staff has informed them of how to submit public comment, should they choose to do so. Now I'll share information about our student applicants. If selected, our student applicants would serve for one year on the Oversight Board. Staff annually invites a Folsom Lake College Promise Program student or alumni to apply and also outreaches to one of our three Rancho Cordova school districts. So a student representation will rotate among those three districts. For 2022, Folsom-Cordova Unified School District was invited to make a representative, make a recommendation for a new student representative. During the open call for applications, the city received three submissions from current Cordova High School students who are also residents of Rancho Cordova. No applications were received from a Promise Program student or alumni. All at-large student applicants met the criteria to serve. The resolution language offers flexibility to select two high school student applicants, since we do not have a Promise Program applicant. Staff recommends that two students are appointed by the city council. Our three applicants for the student appointments are Ms. Aguilar, Mr. Kenaganti, Ms. Denalia. These applicants may be online or in person this evening, and staff informed them of how to submit public comment on this item. Following public comment, staff recommends council start with our adult applicants and then proceed to student applicants. This concludes the staff presentation on item 12.2.
Okay, let's start with, do we have any public comment for this item?
The clerk's office has not received any public comment cards from anyone in the council chambers. We do have one hand that is currently raised in Zoom.
Okay, and just to remind folks that might be in the chambers or on Zoom, if you're, if you're an applicant, this would be your time to make a comment. So I'll just remind folks that if, if you wanted to share something about yourself, now is the time. And so we can go into Zoom, I guess, to start. And we'll take Dean Burke first. And I'll just remind folks, if you're on Zoom or you're in person, this would be the time to make a public comment or to, you'll have, you could talk about yourself for three minutes if you'd like. This will be your kind of one and only chance. Dean, we'll go ahead and...
Sure, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Thanks, yeah, my name is Dean Burke, again, Rancho Cordova resident. Actually, I've lived here since 1982-ish and been in the community a long time. But I, I want to say that last year I joined this, this board. I think I filled in for someone that either left or was no longer qualified. So I guess I filled in a partial term. And so I was interested in continuing that and trying to participate and volunteer further. And again, I just wanted to say hello, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands in Zoom. Again, if I'm looking, the vast majority of these names are people I think are on our payroll. Colleagues, I'll bring it back to us.
Mayor Terry, I, I do think there's a comment card being walked up to me right now as we speak.
You want to take that to the city clerk first? She can go ahead and read it.
Is it Carrie? Carrie Shook, okay, so you'll go up to the podium. She'll have three, you'll have three minutes, and I have a second comment card that has just been walked up as well from Nia.
Okay, let's take a sec, hang on, Carrie. Anybody else that's planning on submitting a comment card? Now is the time. You're not going to get a chance in five minutes to do that. And let me go check Zoom really quick. I'm not seeing anybody.
Well, we can get started while Garrett's convincing Valerie, I think.
Okay, so we have three comment cards now, I think, Stacy?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take, the first one is Carrie, I believe. Carrie, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you, council. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm interested in applying for the Citizen Oversight Board. I'm new resident to Rancho Cordova. I've been here about 19 months. We are happy, so happy here. We moved from Galt, and we wanted a larger city. The American River, I think, was our little tease, so we could bike and hike and run and play and eat. I think we've gained 15 pounds in 19 months. But anyway, so we're, we're at the point now where we just want to get involved in our community, and we just love it here. So we want to make a difference for others to come here and enjoy it.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you very much, next, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, is it Nia? Did I say that correctly? Yes, okay, if you'll come forward, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Nia. I'm a sophomore at Cordova High.
Nia, can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, my name is Nia. I'm a member of, I mean, sorry, I'm a sophomore at Cordova High School, and I've been a resident in Rancho Cordova for about five years. And I've been enjoying it so far, and I really want to make a change within the community. That's why I applied to be on the Oversight Board. And a little about me, I'm on two swim teams, one for Cordova High and Cordova Blue Marlins, and it's, it's very nice. And I'm a member of Key Club, so I do a couple service events in Rancho Cordova. And yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our third, our third speaker is Valerie? Valeria? Close?
Hi, I'm Valeria Aguilar. I'm a sophomore at Cordova High School. I'm in MOC. I've been in MOC for a while. It's for anyone who doesn't... It's for anyone who doesn't know about it, it's a volunteer program run by CEO Three and Conrad Mayer. We do a lot of volunteer work around like the community. And yeah, I hope you take me for consideration for the board. Thank you.
So that was Nia that spoke before you. And then who is that that just spoke? Valerie?
Valerie, oh, sorry.
Valeria.
Valeria, excuse me.
Like in the Lord of Dragons, Valeria?
That's Valerian? There's actually another movie, a sci-fi movie, the Valerian.
I do remember that one too. It's a great sci-fi movie. Winning.
Yeah. But Val. Maybe they're both really, ah, okay. Any other comment cards, Stacy?
That's all the comment cards that I have, and I do not see any hands, as we already discussed, raised in Zoom.
Okay, um, so I hate to do this as chair, but I'm going to go ahead and try to steer the conversation here a little bit. The normal way that we've done this in the past is we each have picked one. It sounds like there's four adult spots and two student spots, one of which we didn't have a Promise Program student for. So I'm going to make the argument because we set our, we made the rules, therefore I guess we're allowed to break them if we want to. Is that we probably could pick two students tonight. And then, although I'm a little confused, Stacy and Randy K, if you can help me with this. Why is it four adults and two students making an even number when we're trying to get to seven? So am I missing something there? Why it's not five adults?
You have three existing Oversight Board members who will have their terms continuing.
So we're adding four adults plus the three that are already there.
Plus two students, yes.
So we're getting to nine total. So.
Donald, I could move approval, I could move, I can move that we select Nia and Valeria to be our two student members.
Kind of how I was trying to get at.
Agreed.
Vice Mayor, thank you very much. So I've got a motion and a second from Vice Mayor Budge and Councilmember Gatewood to appoint Nia and Valeria as the student representatives or board members or however you want to do that. So let's separately take a roll call on that, and then we'll come back and try to hash out the adults after that. So can I have a roll call on that motion?
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati. Yes. Councilmember Sander.
That was my second, but I'll still vote in favor.
Oh.
It was my second.
I can only go with what I heard first, guys, sorry.
That's right, in the office.
It's a very, trust me, running meetings is a very imperfect art here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
I'd say yes. David, I think you were muted.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Congratulations, Nia and Valeria. If that teaches you nothing, that most.
That showing up is everything.
Yeah.
There you go. I was going to say, half of the battle in politics is just showing up. And if that didn't teach you anything, if you just look at the adults that we're about to pick from, I believe, what, we had two that just spoke, so showing up is 80, 90% of the battle sometimes. So congratulations. With that, council, I'll bring it back to the, to talk about the adults in the room, for lack of a better way of describing that. And I guess my two cents is, and I got to back and look because I didn't write down all of the names of who just spoke. For those that showed, I'd start there personally. If you took time to show up to this meeting, even if it was my shared your thoughts, I think those are our that those are my first choices are people that are here.
Yeah, I agree. I'll second that.
Yeah, I would say, I might have to wait, be, wait till the next meeting for the rest of them and at least see if we get like a personal statement or something from the rest of them. But yeah, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion on what we've heard so far.
Okay, so I can easily move approval of Dean Burke. But Donald, we've got personal statements from all of them. It's in the it's in all that information that Stacy gave us.
Yeah, I know. I just, I did hear, and correct me if I'm wrong, Randy K and Stacy did the applicants were it was explained to them that we, that they couldn't come and spoke tonight. And they were told how to do that. And so some chose not to for whatever reason, but I did, I just want to differentiate the fact that we had, and again, I think the last time that we did this, and maybe it was, maybe it was the Planning Commission where we had an individual that was, I believe, a military reservist that couldn't make our meeting and they were.
So Donald, I want to, I want to correct, I want to correct what I said. I would move approval of Dean and Carrie because Carrie is the person who is in the room tonight and Dean is on Zoom. So I would.
Siri stole it from you, David. Dang, got the second on you. Good job, Siri.
I shook it.
So I have a motion, I have a motion by Budge, a second by Pulapati to appoint Carrie and Dean as two of the four members. And hopefully we can agree on that. So can I get a roll call on that motion, which will leave us with two additional vacancies?
Councilmember Pulapati. Yes. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye, okay. We got two left. Colleagues, what do you want to do?
We could propose two names out of the list and get it done today.
I I have no plan, so however we want to approach this, if anyone has favorites.
So you picked the two that were on my list, Carrie and Dean. The other two, and I'll tell you why I had Dean. One, Dean because of his experience and Carrie because she was new. So I picked those two parameters. And the other two that I picked were Sam Bakhter and Enrique Cruz because of their community service and what they've been doing as volunteer activities in the city of Rancho Cordova.
So I highlighted Enrique. I also looked at Lisa and Leoni because they both have financial and construction experience.
Can't agree on everything, so we gotta decide. Let's actually put, are there any other names besides, I believe, the three that I just heard for the two spots?
Then I will move approval of Enrique Cruz.
Second.
That's, that's the one that we've had, that the two of you agreed on. So we've got
Correct.
Motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood for Enrique Cruz for the third of four spots. Can I have a roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati. Yes. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. We're down to one.
So I would, I would say again that both Leoni and Lisa have very strong financial backgrounds and the ability to manage large budgets, which we're basically asking people to review budgetary expenditures and verify that the budgetary expenditures match what they say they can do.
Okay, we, we're so between Lisa and Leoni, I'm picking Lisa just because she's been here longer. So Lisa.
Second.
I have a motion by Pulapati, a second by Gatewood. We'll have a roll call on Lisa being the fourth of four adult positions on the Oversight Committee. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati. Yes. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And can we request that staff send all of them a very lovely letter asking them to stay involved?
Yes, we will do that.
Linda, this is also recorded in case you want to say anything beyond what you just said too.
Okay, so I, all right, so I would say, and thank you, Stacy, I would say that the people, all the people who applied, even though they may have lived here a short period of time, as, as Carrie has, she's already on the board of her HOA and, and believe me, I would applaud that one. But everybody has been trying to get involved in Rancho Cordova. They are very committed to this city. Every one of them expressed their delight in being Rancho Cordova residents and a desire to help, to help the city and their neighbors grow and prosper. And those are exactly the kind of people that we need. And, and I, I think we would all offer our sincere thanks to every one of them.
Agreed.
You know, you don't always have to run for office, but the first start is putting your name on the list. So thank you, everybody, for taking the time to apply and just experiencing my interactions with some of my newer colleagues. I'm pretty sure we might, we're going to be talking about some other boards and commissions here for city in the not-too-distant future. But with that, I think we accomplished what we needed to for 12.2. Is there anything else we were supposed to be doing, Stacy or Randy K? We did it tonight? All right, great. Thank you very much. Moving on to 12.3, discussion on naming the streets and facilities. And I think I'm turning it over to our deputy city manager, I think is sitting down right there. He is. Micah, you have the con.
Congratulations, guys.
So good evening, mayor, council, Micah Runner, deputy city manager. Wait for the presentation to be pulled up, but this is a conversation that started a few years ago around the naming of facilities and streets. With multiple conversations that we've had with, with council about this subject. We even had a presentation by the, one of the leadership, Rancho Cordova leadership classes, interested in naming streets after important veterans or public safety personnel. And at that time, the last conversation we had, or one of the previous ones, there was a council subcommittee on street naming or asset naming that was established, was Councilmember Sander and Councilmember Budge who participate in the naming. And this is, really wanted to come forward with an update on, on where some of these conversations have gone, get some input and direction from the whole council as needed. And then ask some specific questions and next steps with the facilities and street naming. So tonight's goal is to review and comment on criteria that the group, or that the committee has talked about around facilities and major streets. Review approach and add any additional themes for neighborhood streets and categories of individuals or of people. And confirm the approach for the naming of community greens. So just a way to kind of categorize some of these areas. And in our conversations, it really fell into three different buckets of either facilities or, or street names and had different levels of importance. And so those three areas are city facilities and major roads, neighborhood street names, and then community greens. We'll go through each of these different sections as the process or the intent is a little different for each of them and some of the questions that we'll ask. So for public facilities and major streets, and when you see process here, this is the recommended process or, or the process that is being recommended moving forward in, in these different areas. The first is recommendation by the naming committee based on established criteria. For anything related to public facilities and major streets, a recommendation would be made by the Subcommittee on Naming. Any names that are picked or any names that are discussed will be a full council approval of any name. So that, not unlike the conversations that we had with the Dan Skogland atrium and the naming of that facility, that was full council and that will want to move forward with full council discussions when it comes to the naming of public facilities and major streets. And we talk about major streets. These are large arterials. There's not many really of these left. Most of them already have names. But if there are major streets that are identified, will, that will be a whole council discussion at the time. So one of the questions we're going to get to at the end is, and input from the whole council as needed, is really focusing this conversation around criteria. And so when it comes to developing the list or developing recommendations, is focusing on the criteria of of individuals or the names that might be picked. So you'll see some of the criteria here that has been talked about in the Subcommittee is around substantial contribution to Rancho Cordova as a volunteer. And you'll see a little star on that one is, as a volunteer gets a little more credit than a substantial contribution to Rancho Cordova as a professional. So that was part of the naming conversation that, that we had with the Subcommittee. And then from Rancho Cordova with national accomplishments and some connections to the facility by which is being named. And so we'll get to these questions at the end as well. But the question that we'll want you to be thinking about is, are there any other criteria to add to this list as the committee meets and discusses potential options? The second category that we talked about was neighborhood street names. So right now, I'll talk about the current processes. Basically, the developer submits the names for new streets or new communities when they're developed. And so that's basically reviewed by staff as just making sure some of the technical things as far as not having multiple street names the same and some of those other things that are looked at. So the process that we're recommending moving forward with for neighborhood street names is developers can select a theme category based on approved list or, or city council-approved alternative theme. So we'll get to the next slide in a minute, but there'll be a list of theme categories that instead of the developer coming up with a list and providing it, we'll give the developer a list of themes that they can pick, pick from. Won't necessarily provide all the names that they'll pick, but a theme that they could use for street naming moving forward. The naming committee will work on also ways to establish a list of individual names to be used by developers. And the next step of the process will be trying to come up with a good list of, a longer list of names, whether it be veterans or community volunteers or those things that can be used also for additional names. And so the question we'll ask at the end of, of this conversation will be, are there any additional themes or categories of people to add to the list? And just as furthering that conversation, the themes that I've come up with so far, you'll see on the left side of the screen, which anything from trees in Northern California to scientific elements, to aerobics scientists, to California history, these are all themes, approved themes that we will give to the developer that they can pick from to start naming their streets after when new neighborhoods are developed. The other side of this list is you'll see a people and categories. So this will be the basic categories by which the naming committee will, will look at these different categories and select potential names from to start populating an ongoing list. Not necessarily to name whole neighborhoods around, but potentially a few streets here and there within some of these neighborhoods that have these themes. And so the question that, again, we'll ask at the end is, does, as the whole council looks at these lists, are there any additional items or themes or people categories that the naming committee should be thinking about? So really, the, the next steps is to immediately start providing themes to developers to use for new neighborhoods. There really was a desire to not go too long without providing these themes as a very important process is having themes of neighborhoods that represent the community in some way. And as far as, I know there's some concern about some of the ocean themes in some of our neighborhoods. And so making sure that we're a little more deliberate in providing the developers' names and themes that they can use. And then continue to meet with the naming Subcommittee to develop the list of people names for facilities, major roads, and the additional neighborhood streets. And really, the committee will be pulled together as needed moving forward to continue to work on this list and, and provide those details. And with that, the kind of recommendation and direction tonight, you'll see in front of you are those three different areas. We can flip back to some of the other lists if, if needed on the PowerPoint. But wanted to open it up for discussion and see if any of the naming committee members, Councilmember Sander or Councilmember Budge had anything to add. But with that, we're looking for input from the whole council on this approach moving forward.
Um, before we take public comments, uh, yeah, committee members, David, Linda, anything to share that staff didn't cover?
I, I would just add that this is a deceptively simple and complicated project. It's simple to sort of say, oh yeah, here's the parameters. It's gonna be difficult perhaps to make lists. And the debate about the parameters and the qualifications has been interesting in the, in the meetings we've had.
Um, the only thing I would add, and I'm not sure I agree with David, that lists, lists of themes are easy, lists of people are more difficult because you know, everybody will have a, a favorite somebody or other. But um, but to also um, add that sometimes we may not need to provide permanent names. And um, we have, we're all probably familiar with cities where um, it may, uh, that the street may have a, an honorary name for a while, and it doesn't mean that the postal service addresses uh, that street, um, changes the address of that street. But they simply could be named for a veteran, or as we saw in Indianapolis on a study mission. Every year they um, renamed all the streets around their football arena for the people who were playing on the football team that year. So, you know, but it, it wasn't that they just completely changed the name of the street. It simply had an honorary street to go with the um, to simply um, honor people at that time. And that this can be a fluid list under themes, if we all come up with a different theme that we think should be, uh, should be recognized here. Then we should, then we should do that.
Thank you. Thanks for your service on the committee. I know that was not a committee I was interested in working on, so I'm glad there were people that wanted to do that.
It was lots of fun.
I'm glad that's how you would describe it. Tim, I'm not sure I would describe it the same way, so. Again, I'm glad you wanted to do it and I didn't have to. Uh, with that, uh, colleagues, any questions for staff in the presentation that we saw? Okay, uh, Stacy, do you have any public comment on this item?
The city clerk's office is having a public comment card walked up to her carpool.
Uh, and I don't see anybody in Zoom. And our numbers there are dwindling by the second. I think I only see a couple of people here that aren't on our payroll now. Um, but we have a public comment in the room, Stacy?
Helen Waylon-Bushaw.
Helen Waylon-Bushaw, and I was a high-level-
Go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, and I was a high-level manager in the postal service. If I heard someone write, where the names aren't gonna be like forever on the street because it takes ten years to change a name on a street. It goes into a database as a-
I don't think that's what she was saying, Helen.
No.
That's not a public thing.
No, that, uh, that is absolutely not what I was saying, Helen.
That's how I interpret it.
I'm sorry.
Because, you know, street names-
No, the idea, the idea was to, was to do what other cities around the United States have done. If we wanted to um, give a street an honorary name for a while, then that would be an honorary name, but it would not change the primary name of the street or the postal address.
Okay, wha- what ends up happening, Linda, is when you give an honorary name, people start to put it on their mail.
Well, but Indianapolis, Indianapolis has done it successfully. I believe Oak Grove has done it successfully.
Okay, but what I'm telling you is the postal side. And when Gold River took the name Gold River and wouldn't use Rancho Cordova, and they petitioned the postal service, I think it was in nineteen ninety-two, to have their zip code, their own zip code, the postal service doesn't have enough zip codes. So when I was in a post office in Modesto running it, someone came down to the post office and said to me, your zip code book is wrong, and I said, what do you mean? They said, there's a city called Gold River, and I said, no, it's, it's not in the zip code book because it's part of Rancho Cordova. It has the same zip code as Rancho Cordova, but the post office put in a sys- in the system a fictitious name so that it, the computers will automatically transfer over the name to the right zip code and give it the nine, really the eleven-digit zip code that everybody's piece of, everybody's address has, an eleven-digit zip code whether you realize it or not. And they sort to the sector segment, so when you start talking about putting these street names up as fictitious, you don't understand how it affects the postal service, and I seriously think you might wanna, uh, somebody might wanna call the address information department down there in West Sacramento and find out some of the nightmares that they have, because customers get really mad when they put their street name on their mail and they wanna use the other name and it doesn't come to them. Their packages don't get delivered.
Yeah, thank you, Helen. Um, yeah, that, thank you very much, that, I-
Well, somebody might have a chat with the, yeah. Somebody should have a chat with the title companies because there's a whole host of us that get mail addressed as Gold River.
Yeah, I, and I grew up by a place called La Sela Beach that, you know, didn't wanna call themselves Watsonville and a bunch of other places, and so uh, there, there are plenty of examples across the country of people trying to self, self-identify themselves. I don't think at all, Linda, what you were talking about was that, we were talking about temporary naming of assets, including streets to honor certain people. They wouldn't be names that you would use for mailing purposes, they would only be used for honorary uh, special occasions of a, a fallen veteran or um, uh, somebody who got the, the key to the city, and we may name a street after him for a day or something, so. There's plenty of, there's plenty of examples of how this works just fine and it doesn't destroy the post office at the same time. Um, any other public comment?
No, and I don't see any additional hands that are raised in Zoom.
Okay, um, staff, I don't think we need a, a formal motion for this, right? I'm, I'm seeing receive and provide direction. Is there any direction that staff needs from this? Is this, you just need to know that we're okay with it, or do you, are we actually adopting a ordinance?
No, no, no adoption or, or ordinance or resolution, I think there uh, couple of things just, uh, first is just, you know, kind of wanted the whole council to know as far as we're just gonna start implementing this uh, new way to name streets uh, within the neighborhood, which is providing themes. Uh, but also if the whole council was interested in either providing a little more um, direction or comments around the either criteria for the naming of facilities or additional themes um, uh, for the different neighborhoods, uh, if interested, is available to the whole council, but if not, uh, we'll continue to move forward and, and meet with the naming committee as necessary.
Personally, somebody who didn't serve on that committee and didn't really want to, I will trust the work of the committee. Um, I don't know if anybody wants to disagree with me. Sorry if I-
No, and, and-
If you happen to disagree with me.
I don't disagree with you, Mayor. I think this is a really great list of themes and of both um, the people and whatever the theme category that was. This is truly relevant to the city of Rancho Cordova, and it really brings into perspective when you see something and then you wanna talk about it and you have a history associated. Especially Linda, she, every time I talk to her, we talk about, you know, how the uh, streets are named after wineyards and she has a history that goes with it, and now we'll have a lot more of this in the city of Rancho Cordova.
And, uh, thank you, Siri, and, and yes, if, you know, if, if um, if people have specific ideas in terms of uh, fleshing out either the categories or the people, or you want something or somebody not left out, you know, we'd love to hear that.
Yep. Okay, uh, thank you, David, Linda, and staff for working on this for I don't know how long it's been since we talked about this committee. It feels like this has been years in the making, like, like we might have been looking at each other in person when we sent you on your merry way to work on this. Um, so it might have been before that pesky pandemic, but thank you very much. Um, with that, we'll move on to item thirteen. Uh, request for future agenda items?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so this is something that Cyrus is aware of. Um, for twenty years, we have probably known, met and, and gotten to know at least six um, consuls general who represented Korea. Um, they've all come up from the Bay Area, their, their offices are in the Bay Area, but they've been very active in our Korean-American community here in Rancho Cordova. And for many years, we have been requested um, to do a sister city with a city in Korea. Um,
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, often, it is, it is something like um, Seoul, which unfortunately has some eight or some odd million people and, and is not really relative to Rancho Cordova. But it turns out that the um, the consul general has an ability to help create a sister city in Korea that does not have to go through the um, Sister City International Organization, which we kind of found to be a very large bureaucracy. And um, um, I would ask that we put this on the agenda so that we could think about uh, simply getting a letter of interest to the consul general before he is reposted at the end of this year. And let him know that um, because we have so many Korean-American businesses, so many um, Korean-American residents that would be very interested in uh, developing some sort of a sister city relationship. It may be more like what other countries call twinning as opposed to a formal, that uh, the Sister City International Organization. So I would ask that we put this on the agenda.
I love the idea, and I have a cousin that just moved to Korea, so.
Oh, my goodness.
Personally, I have some skin in the game on that. That's actually something I would wanna work on. Um, yeah, I, I love the idea.
Well, I love ramen, so I'm gonna vote for it.
Really? Love ramen. Alright, I'm in.
Ramen would be Japanese, right?
No, no, don't try to figure out the logic of that statement.
I, I, I can't pronounce bibimbap, so.
Yeah, I get it.
You could bibimbap, you could do barbecue. I could think, I have to think of the other stuff. Yeah, there's a lot of stuff there, anyway. Uh, and we have a very rich Korean history here, so I love the idea.
Thank you all. I appreciate you.
So, I can't, Mr. Mayor, if I may summarize, uh, uh, this was not on the agenda, so we cannot really make a decision tonight. But I think what I'm hearing, there's support to bring this back to the next-
Yeah, we're on future agenda items, Cyrus.
Uh, we will, we'll get some additional inform- Yeah, we will get some additional information on it, and then we will kind of highlight the process, so hopefully either this first or second meeting in October will be uh, bringing topic back to you for discussion.
Yeah, I, I feel like we've, we've, we've toyed with this idea a handful of times, and we probably have a lot of that, the work done as far as how how we would do this, because it, it's come up and we've never really tackled it again since Costa Rica, which was before I was here.
Right.
Any other requests for future agenda items?
I've got one.
Go ahead, David.
And it may already be scheduled, but we need a follow-up meeting with the Little League Board, perhaps in a work session format. Uh, an alternative to that would be a meeting with staff and the Little League Board to sort of work out what their interests are and, and get more information on the table. I think there's a gap of information between that board and, and staff. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to try to facilitate that.
Uh, that, yes. Um, based on, based on that last conversation that we had with them, there's definitely um, a need to research other opportunities.
Similarly, I don't know this is a future agenda item, although it will be at some point. Uh, we're getting a lot of communications from residents about infill projects, whether it's warehouses or housing or apartments or something, and I would, I would like to think about our city having an approach to handling those that's a little more perhaps hands-on than telling them to wait for the next public meeting. There's gotta be a better way of managing this, and if that, if that requires a council discussion, I think we could do that. But uh, you know, virtually every meeting, we're hearing about it, and I'm not sure residents are getting great feedback on everything they're giving us, and I think they, they deserve that, and in all cases, they're working on behalf of their neighborhood. So, we oughta, we oughta be supporting that in some way. Telling them, wait for the next public meeting, I don't know that that's the best response. So, if we wanna talk about that as a group, I think that would be a great, a great suggestion.
Um, David, that's uh, probably a um, a conversation with the planning department, um, because you're right, unfortunately, um, as happened to everybody after Prop thirteen was passed, sometimes we have to wait for an applicant who um, may or may not have a positive project to provide an update or to request to come back to the council. So maybe there is a way to um, provide additional information without having to wait to hear from the applicant.
Specifically what, what has triggered this is just saying letter after letter after letter with lists of technical questions. So as a council member, I can cut and paste, say, can I get an answer to all these? But I think otherwise, their answer is wait for the next meeting. And that, and the question may or not, may not be answered. So it doesn't feel like how I think right, we want Rancho Cordova to feel to our residents.
And I, believe me, I couldn't agree with you more. Um, you know, we um, technically, we are supposed to not express opinions and to um, to reserve our final decisions until applications actually come before the city council for some sort of a, a final review or a denial or adoption. But when people are going to um, are really doing some heavy-duty research and coming up with very specific lists of issues that could potentially be incorporated into um, conditions uh, for approval or den- or reasons for denial.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those people deserve the ability to um, to get a, a, a good response, a positive, of some sort of an educated response to the issues that they're proposing.
So that takes-
So, so I, I, I wanna remind folks that, again, this is this is a request for future agenda items, and I feel like we're getting into the weeds on actual stuff. We, we could come back, I, I guess my suggestion would be is we could come back with an agenda item to talk about how we navigate the planning process. My suggestion would be is to do that after some of these items that we've been hearing have been delineated and decided um, as much as possible, because a lot, some of these are things that haven't been in front of us for years, to be frank with you. Um, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna veer too far into solving something, because again, this isn't agendized. Uh, and the public has a right, just like property owners and developers and everybody else have rights, which is again, to Linda's point, why we can't express our opinion on a given project prior to it being presented to us, because in a lot of instances, w- we operate as the jury for these things, and if we're prejudicial to either side, the ones that are against it or for it, that, that could prevent us from actually being able to participate even in the process. Uh, so with that, I would suggest that Cyrus, hopefully you got enough there that there's an interest from the council, and it sounds like a majority of us that would like to talk a little bit further about how we collect information throughout the process and capture that for public hearings around development discussions. Hopefully, I encap- I encapsulated what I believe I heard from Councilmember Sander and Vice-Mer Budge. If I didn't, I'm sorry, but I was trying to do my best there.
There may be neighboring jurisdictions that handle this in a, in a certain way we can learn from. This is relatively new to the city, dealing with all these infill projects, so.
Yeah, I, I, I would just push a little bit further to say, are there people anywhere in this country, or in particular in California, because I think we have some unique things when it comes to the Brown Act and some other pla- and some other things that, I remember even sharing this at a National League of Cities conference, and I say, well, yeah, you know, I can't even talk about that until it comes forward, and they're like, what are you talking about? Like, where we are, you can, you can oppose something for years and still get to vote on it, and it just doesn't work that way here for us. Um, yeah, but hopefully, yes, I, 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 I felt the same kind of pent-up frustration of people that have been sending us emails for years now, frankly, on some projects that I haven't seen a, a map or a plan or a discussion for years about, and I'm hearing quotes of, we're poised to do something tomorrow, it seems like, so, you know. So, you know, some of that, and some of that's just misleading information about even what's about to happen. Cyrus, do you have enough there to kind of put something together, hopefully?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, and I think that was David, myself, and Linda, at least, that expressed an interest in that topic. Any other agenda items? Okay, with that, we will adjourn to the memory of Deputy and Ranch Cordova Officer Mark Stausik and Queen Elizabeth II. And welcome King Charles III. And I don't think any of us named our children after that, regardless of the names of some of them. And with that, we will adjourn to-
Your son or Donald?
Yeah, and to that, we will adjourn to the closed session, and we will be back out to report out as soon as possible. Thank you, everyone.